You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Well, I think, I think almost all of those were, yes, map, map related, correct? And it's just in one year, the assessments will all get, doesn't impact how they get treated during the revaluation.
So what's going on now, what's not affecting that?
Right, if he's changed, if he's changing, so some of it was about acreage based on lower, low water level and different things. The acreage will stay, values will change through the revaluation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public input.
Just wanted to say one thing, I had two medical emergencies last month. He was there, he was at the conference. One was very serious together, I was certainly agreeing with Chester and everything. I would thank you for those.
Very good, thank you. Consideration of old business, fire station advisory committee.
So I include the letters we've received so far, and then Mr. DeRocher dropped one off tomorrow, oh, yesterday. So I included that separately in the packets, it already been, it already been printed.
Do they already have it, or?
Uh, yes, I gave this one off.
We wanted to do that.
What do you have your doctorate in?
Yes.
Dependmanship?
They received the list, I sent you slide.
Yep.
I showed it to Sly, I don't remember if I showed it to you. I thought, I thought it was just informational people you had in mind, but it was up to them to apply, so.
I did reach out to him, I sent you a file, so, I respectfully request sometimes to reach out to him. I just assumed that we would talk about all of them, as far as I understand, everybody, more than me. I thought it wasn't, but last night, it could be Friday, so I don't remember exactly, that we tried. We sold, much of the people push the agenda. If we had 20 people, which looks like we potentially had 15, I think that would be, would be great, but, you know, they can figure out their own getting structures, that would be my thoughts.
That's what happens sometimes. Yeah, so a couple of things that I've been bothering myself. How do we pick a committee, is it gonna be, uh, us three, is it gonna be, you know, other people? Okay, so you, I was actually thinking, they're the people to be honest.
First, I think Eric should be involved in discussions.
Well, that was my next, so it was, without the next thing I was gonna add, maybe on each one of these meetings, one of them, which should be attending meetings too.
I was just trying to hear it.
Well, the, what we're trying to put together, um, I was suggesting that maybe you, well, one of the other guys, we have one of you guys at every one of the meetings, just because you can answer a lot for these, these, you know, most of these people aren't gonna be firemen or in a fire station, so, there'll, there'll be someone there to ask questions as they own the committees. That's one of the things I think we should ask.
That should, I'll make sure more like this assessment, and, uh, we must recognize, uh, the role of it, so.
Yeah. Unless Mike wants to do it.
All set. I defer to Eric.
Oh, I guess Bill was telling me maybe some is too bad, how do we go about picking the safety people wanting on this committee? How do we come to what we need the right people? Would that be one person deciding this, would it be all of us, would it be?
Yeah, I would say probably all of us, you know, there's, uh, I guess you probably have the cabinet beforehand, you know, maybe you give an idea of how many people you're going to have on this committee, you know? You could open it up to be 50 people, and you have 50 ideas, you know, so, I think it'd be better if you capped it at a, you know, you're only gonna have six people, eight people, 10 people, whatever it is, however they're, it's, it's a known quantity. Hopefully you get a good demographic for, I mean, is that?
So maybe we could reach out to the other people on that list, and, um, then meet with Eric at our next meeting, figure over.
So, I guess the main reason I didn't reach out to people is usually if you invite them, then you should put them on, I would think, if you're inviting them to apply, so is that, that's why I thought, and I apologize for misunderstanding, I thought we had talked about was, we were gonna post it, and then I didn't know it was for me to reach out to them, so, I apologize, I'm supposed to do it. But if we're gonna reach out to them, I don't think you say, hey, we'd like you to be on the committee, and then not put them on, so.
Well, that's why I think you could have a tiered, a tiered committee, and a true executive committee that addresses what Eric is saying, not for the people.
Right, no, I, yeah, I understand.
With executive committee, number, single digits, and then we, however many, ten, however many people would act as support, and work collaboratively, but ultimately, whatever propels us up, we come from that committee. I mean, you have, you just don't market it very well.
I think we need, need to get it, you know, some of the ideas to get a, you know, I would move forward from the, you know, from the short term into the long term, and these, you know, they tend to be all, sit down and work on it, and then, get smaller hearings to, but, where it wants to come, and see what the proposal would get out, and then, see what other ones, you know, that has to go on. And then, then you look, that we go in on, what should we do on, on, yeah.
I think Sly said the tone is that there's nothing off the table. Well, I should say, you know, there's, there's a few properties that were brought up that are off the table, because they're available. So, we have to be looking at things that, that are available, but in terms of the scope of, as he said. We obviously haven't succeeded, so, so, we, we should need to figure out which ones are available, once they're able from school, if they wanna cooperate, if they don't, then, they go ahead and branch, that's, I don't know, push that on, it's, yeah. Well, we know the school, it's not a question of cooperation, it's, they don't have the capability. And we, we know that first recourse is they have to offer the buildings to charter schools, and if the charter schools take it, probably won't get out. So, we, we don't, we don't, we're not in a position to do this first off, you know, but I think more importantly, Michael, we talked to him several times, not even on the radar.
Well, say that again, what's not on the radar?
Couple of block rocks, that come, come available.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, I mean.
That's what Chairman told me, that they've only had preliminary sessions.
Oh, that they haven't just, okay, yeah, that they haven't decided, yeah, okay, that's fair.
I would say that main blocks will be the block rocks, and, they can keep that, you know, that's, that's not, yeah, that's not the one.
Michael provided us with the RSA a few months ago, they're in Cleveland, they're setting up charter schools, and there are several charter schools in the place. I reached out to Boogie Ward to see if she could put in some sections, change that, like, they have first steps, she was going to work on that, try to follow up. Should we get something done before that? It'd be helpful, yeah.
But, what's one we stop doing, we're under the gun of time to improve, and large, big decisions like this, not just needed, but we don't have it, unless, if we wanna get to, the, 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 yeah.
That's why I thought we could get several readings, you know, before, like, some reading to, you know, the school and all.
So we have it posted, so you'd like to reach out to the people that are on the list there?
I'll do it since I have the list, if they're interested.
Several of them already, yeah.
I think we're in a, should, should, maybe a little bit, yeah, maybe a dozen.
The leaders have been going public anyways, but, you know, in the public, you can have a public session, we're making sure out there, I mean, there's some, some, and set the school.
So, that to bring this together, what would be the steps to take, um, they put their application in, then we come especially and bring them all here, and we discuss with them, what we're hoping to get out of this, or is that what?
I think first, we just pick what we want for a committee, by July 3rd, our next meeting, meet with their, you know, we'll come to a number. Executive Board, I like that idea, five to seven, and then have a larger group meeting, and then we'll just go through names and, you know, do what we can to represent the different areas or whatever, and interests, and it's not gonna be all the realtors.
Shots fired.
There you go. Yes. Okay. Go for July 3rd?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I've got a question.
Sure.
I'm having a hard time getting people to go to committee?
No, it's just that Bill recommended some people that had input in the past on fire stations and stuff, and, uh, kinda posted it, but maybe they didn't see it. So, we wanna make sure they're aware of the posting.
I had a few people that posted, I said, I don't know, they were lying, I said, I thought I posted that.
Yep, they can either, we didn't, we, no, we didn't. They can update the posting, yeah, by July, July 1st. Does that work for you?
Yeah, sounds good.
You can say afterwards, tell it to them.
All right, if we're good on that, we'll move on to appointments, Fire Chief Eric Mattson, department update, disposal of the ambulance.
So, I guess first off, I, I, and I pose this question about, um, Jim Bell, was the idea of getting rid of the ambulance? We're not really sure, not really sure that we, as the fire department, thought of that.
It came from the fire chief at the time?
Was it?
Yeah, so something that, I think it was October, November, yeah, it was later.
All right, because I've had a few people ask me, and I'm like, don't, really, the call, that mean?
Was it listed, listed yet?
Didn't get posted.
Not posted.
I think we actually, I was three inside, but we're definitely gonna do that.
I think we did.
Well, I think it was when Ken was on the board, so it was last fall. And then Sly followed up with me, because it hadn't been posted, and suggested that I reach out to the county, since they had bought the squads.
We'd spent a lot of money on a pocket for the stair chair and the stretcher.
Right.
So, I wanted to make sure we got that money back, so.
But I said to him the other day, and I'll say it now, I apologize, that I thought you were aware of it, so it was not, it was not intentional.
Yep.
Wasn't, wasn't trying to get you surprised like that, so.
Nope, 'cause I had a lot, I had a lot of department asking, and I wasn't aware of that, so. I mean, we have, we have, been using it very long, the last probably three or four months, anyone, without too much problem.
Yep.
I think it truly does have a value to us, especially when we don't know where county lies right now, whereas the cost of next year's tab for their, their, um, I believe it's something we, you know, we should keep, lately, as we've done, I wouldn't say a problem, but county has had a few issues with their ambulances coming out of West Point. So, with that, it would be nice, you know, maybe we can make another discussion with them as well, if the ambulance is gonna come out of West Point, yeah, maybe we, kind of get our crack at it, if we can get our ambulance out. Maybe we have that.
Why don't you hunt that something, a year and a half, or, but we, a year and a half?
I would think a year and a half, right, and it's where that ball party.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, yeah.
That contract comes up, Andy?
Yeah.
We hang on to that other year and a half, is that what you're saying?
I think what kinda kicked it off was the sticker shop at the CIP committee, when the, when a new one was put on the capital plan for 300,000 or 400,000, and, I think that got some, got some attention.
Yeah, maybe some school.
Yep. Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it gotten released to go out, that they, you know, comes, and then we can reassess whether it's, you know, kept its value or lost its value.
Do we start it, do we, do we maintain it right now, or is it, we're sitting there for a year and a half, and somebody went in and started, we roll the wheels, something, you want that?
Pretty much on a daily basis, I, I don't know about.
And since, uh, we've detected. How much stuff in that ambulance goes out of code, meaning like, stuff that won't, would have to be updated if we did activate that in a year and a half, or a while?
Um, no, because we carried most of that same equipment on the squad as well, I got, so, just in smaller quantity. Yep, so all that equipment is, is the same as on the squad, less the car and the stair chair, over.
So, anybody got an idea what, what we were gonna think to ask, right, what, what is it, what? Just all hot and, or anybody got lots of?
I think it was 50,000 when we got it, right, because that's what the grant was for.
Yes, we paid 50 for it, and we paid another 25 for the car, and, 25,000 for the car?
Yeah.
It's half the price of the ambulance?
It's an old ambulance.
Yep, and I wanna say that the stair chair was somewhere in the $5,000 range.
So probably less than that.
I mean, I wouldn't know, if we're, if we're invested in me, $50,000, like, so, but, I tend to, I tend to think that when I have a good idea, we're just hanging on to it, and maintaining it, just to see what we can drop, I mean, I mean, what is that kind of money even to us, right at this point, versus the value of us having this and owning this? I don't know.
Well, it might not be worth anything in a couple of years.
That's different, it's, I, I, I felt that too, but, you feel that, that's a?
Well, I mean, right now, the value of that, that truck is, is, it's gonna, I would have to say it's going to hold close to that value. Um, because, right now, talking to different departments that are trying to buy, not only ambulances, but fire trucks, sorry, um, can't find it, you know, the city of Dean, they said one of theirs, uh, transmission sold out, and their truck, and they can't find another, they were down in Texas a few weeks ago, and those are used. So, the, the, the used market for this stuff is not there anymore, and the volume is quite high, and to get something built brand new, is somewhere in the range of two plus years. And that's just, and that's just ambulance and fire trucks, they're all in that same, same quandary of, you can't find people to work, and it's taking them longer to get equipment on the board, so.
The main use of a truck right now here is like a safety net.
That would be, yeah.
Right, I know, and, and to my opinion, a year and a half, I don't have a value of that, a truck, that's like in one year and a half, but not looking at five years, so, you know? Just until we see what's gonna happen with the county, in case we do run into trouble, is that what I'm trying to say?
That's, that was my concern, yeah.
It is two, two years, so the contract is basically just coming up on the end of the first year, because it was, it's a July 1st.
And what do they do to come in again?
I talked to them, and they're planning to give us some more accurate, not more accurate, some accurate projections of the real cost, uh, this fall. Yes.
I haven't changed my mind, so, I was, I was in favor, I was in favor. So, what would be helpful, appreciate your desire to be better, totally agree, uh, two things, one would be if you could give us some data for the last three months, or, at least, since we initiated the transition, so you've got, you were your team, uh, some data on, on usage, and, and also, if you could bring it to orders, or, or, if you haven't already done so, to give us a sense of, of the undercarriage?
Yep.
Whether we, you know, we're gonna look after any issues we have, I think that would be helpful.
Yep.
My, my thought, Jim, was that we know what we got, we didn't pay for it ultimately, um, what we do, it costs us, but we, we did, we ultimately will reimburse that year for it, but we know what we got, and we got it because we were informed that Adrian Boulis, you know, most of you are gonna back each other up, and we were left with the possibility, with all the cards going, you can't say, oh, come for that, that somebody would look at us and say, you had a chance to get a ambulance for $50,000, and I lost my father because you didn't do it, so, anyway, that, that was the position that we were in back then, and for now, I'm feeling, well, it's not costing us. So, it was not costing us anything, which is why I asked about, you know, the undercarriage, and those kinds of things, and this slide, what we made, the, the 20,000, $25,000 investment, so, whether we get it out, get it back. Well, my concern even more, if, if we're counting on it, and then regardless of what the counting does, there's a push to replace it, because, because that's, to me, is a different discussion, if we're using it now.
Yeah.
But that data would be helpful in the, in the discussion, then there'd be the question of why, ultimately, that I think would, like, you and the captain, et cetera, to, to wanna move on, I mean, at Bill's request, so. It's disappointing that, that it wasn't communicated to the staff, because it was not initiated by, by the board.
Yep.
Is it ready to begin driving?
Oh, yeah, it's all, it's all likely, you see.
I, I do agree with that, we should take some borders, and we should really take a quick look at the chassis, and we can look at that and see if we're gonna have any problems.
Yeah, I mean, it goes down, and you give it all its services from there, and we've had no, it's come out with no big issues.
When's its inspection?
September. September, all, all the equipment goes down, gets, gets, uh, inspected, and then by August, September, a lot of our, our annual maintenance, so, whether that's, you know, pump testing, service, ladders, all that stuff, is done once a fall, so, the only thing we have had to do with that lately is we had an airbag knee in that different place just recently, so. Other than that, the thing is, the ambulance has been running good for us, no issue.
So, what was the, the comment regarding West Point?
Um, so there, when they become busy, whether they're dealing with hospital, or other towns, or covering somewhere else, their next closest to ambulance is in West Point. So, they typically spend a few ambulances out of, out of Swansea here, to go do whatever they've got to deal with, and, once they run out of people here, they rely on the ambulance to West Point. Once they rely on, once they've expended that, the next one comes out of Hildburgh, it's great for them, if they're back.
In, in that data, would be helpful, so, if, if we, if you had the, that data, how many calls are being serviced out of West Point, and if any of them, how, how it's going wrong? Because if, if they're coming in to speak, well, it's not helpful information, as they expand their services.
Yep.
Because they're, they're based here, like, what, what other bases are they, they found, and going up the other units, so, we'd be know what we can come out, I think that would be helpful, in terms of our own decisions. You know, we're, we, I can try to look that up. Are we getting cooperation, when we show up on scene?
Yes, well, either. Yep, I think we're gonna work it great together, no, no real issues, no, no attitudes, there's no, nobody against, it's a lot of my patient, it's your patient, fair thing, so, things are going well.
Versus, uh, chief trying to fish through his data, might be easier just for me to reach out to county to get, they should have.
They would probably be the ones that would have that data more than we.
Because you would just know if they responded, you wouldn't necessarily know where they came from, so. I gotta make up for, I gotta make up.
Departments?
Uh, I think the rest of the department, um, I think we're doing okay, the, the four of us and the staff, we've all kind of settled in, everybody's got different projects going on. Uh, we're working on a, at least a 16-month training schedule, I think we've been that all down now, so, everybody has an idea from now until a year and a half from now, what we're gonna be training on, whether that's EMS, dive stuff, or fire, so, they'll go into the topic, and if they, I guess, probably lack of a better term, whether they choose that, are able to cover it on, you know, you know, is it, is it one of those trainings I can maybe skip, because I've got some family function thing going on, or should I really come to this, this important sounding kind of training? We have that, um, we've been looking at our run cars, due to, we should always look at our run cars, but, uh, we've been having a pretty good look at that, uh, maybe to try to, jockey some towns around on our, some of our current plans, a lot of them, the ones we've had lately, we've had minimal input from our own people, just timing wise, during the day. So, maybe it's something we look at with other families, you know, we start getting a little slower, versus waiting till it's, think it's something worse, to ask them to come in.
And everything's going smooth with them and Thompson Bridge?
So far, yep, so far, we're pretty okay, right, we have rough, um, we're, we're just starting bringing the rough truck over, is that?
First attack?
Right, yeah, kind of, you know, at least somebody else can get across that with something.
And you got, uh, mutual aid lined up?
Yes, and there's more stuff lined up with mutual aid, because it's made things up, yep.
Good.
Yep, we've been offset, and, uh, yeah, so, things are, things are all right, you know, our training's have been well attended lately.
Good.
So, I think we're starting to turn the corner, and, you know, people are starting to want them.
Very nice, anything else for the chief?
How are we doing in, in terms of, of regaining support from some of those who are interested, and also bringing in, in?
Um, we're just coming up to that list now, like you said, everybody's kind of, kind of all finally settled into our place, and now we're gonna, that's our next plan with that, is to kind of, take a look at the, you know, how do we bring some of these people either back, or, when they make a decision to move on, or the other, you know, so, that's, that's coming up. Probably within the next month, it's gonna be tough, we have, two of the deputies, both have some very substantial vacations towards the end of the month, so, there is a plan in there, start working at that. And, uh, we've actually had, um, Deputy Burke has gotten together, bringing a couple other of the officers in, to work on group intervention areas. How do we, you know, how do we advertise for it, how do we, so, he's, he's working on a lot of that stuff right now, trying to bring those together, so, hopefully within the next month or so, we should give more back on that. We have had, oddly enough, one pass member, there's finally, uh, he came back, wanted to join, John Warner, the guy that also has, hit work there. Finally, there's some childcare stuff that he's had cleared up for him, so he's able to come back, which will be a good asset, he's a medic. Finally, there's some childcare stuff that he's cleared up for him, so he's able to come back, which will be a good asset, he's a medic. We had another girl just over in town, she's already had her fire one. She's got all the paperwork in line, she's been into Sebastian. I believe he's going to have some paperwork either this week or next week.
She's one of our non-publics leaders, so.
So, they'll be, you know, she'll be, she'll be the next one. And I had a mother requiring for her daughter, how to get on as a junior.
Chief, could you speak on fire prevention? Where it currently is or where you'd like to see it?
Fire prevention as far as, what, you'd like to see the town?
Where, where you would like to see the town, where it is right now for fire prevention?
Your brochure?
Fire prevention is brilliant, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we have a pretty good handle on our fire prevention issues right now and items. You know, we get out into a lot of the, all the new commercial buildings. Obviously, we get, we get to inspect those. We've been working on updating some of our, our lists of commercial ownership. And we're getting, we're going to get, process of being able to get out here soon and meet up with those people. Make sure their keys work for their buildings, you know, that kind of stuff, so we can get in and out of those places.
Points in the same, in the same.
Yep, the Knox walks and such. And with that, that'll also get us, you know, kind of a, a nose into the door to see how their fire prevention, how their fire stuff is, is in their buildings.
It's going to ask for, you know, new stuff, it's going to be, existing stuff, that's sort of the problem.
At times, yep.
Especially your two or three family homes.
Well, that one's, unfortunately, the state is, the state is a, your home is your castle. Two or three family homes are not under our jurisdiction. So, we can't really get into those places. We can make suggestions, then we try to if we see deficiencies. But, as far as that's, that goes, we, we can't really, we can't really go in. It's four parts or more, then we have some, some, you know, some leverage to, to force. Whether it's extinguishers or fire alarms or strinkles for that matter.
Something like that. Burke, would you be able to, uh, fire prevention help, I mean, do you have fire prevention, just something just to?
We do not, for the most part, anybody that has any kind of violations have been, again, not on wood, um, pretty amicable to correct them. You know, for the most part, we're not seeing huge things, it's, you know, lateness on whether they, you know, how and whether they get their inspections done. That kind of stuff. But for the most part, everybody has been very good at, about getting those corrected. No big problems there, thankfully.
The only thing I like to add is I don't hope to see soon a real roster of, a real one that, we're solid, you know? We have that foundation.
Yep.
Because, you know, we have that roster, but it's not true, you know? And that's what I'm.
And that's where we're going to do next, you know, just, just getting some of that, and finally kind of getting the D.
I mean, that's going to be important.
The time, uh, the time part, uh, part of this, then I can, you know, go back as, you know, in history and see how much people have participated. When we get back to make that assessment.
Yeah, it's going to be tough to say, hey, if we can't be a part of it, we need.
Right.
If you're going to be on this, you've got to be here when.
Point of order, Mr. Jim?
Sure.
Was there consensus of the board about, going back to the ambulance? I didn't get whether there was consensus on the board to hold off now, is that?
Well, I think we want to look at the Cheshire County EMS statistics and.
I'm talking about the ambulance?
Right, because it's based on that.
So.
So we're, we're going to hold off on disposing of it right now.
That's what I needed to know.
But we want to see what the statistics are like, what the maintenance records are. What the undercarriage is, things like that.
So the consensus is keep the ambulance for now until inspections can be done to evaluate its, its status.
For further evaluation.
Yeah, just to tie in with Jim, just, and also the retention and recruitment. Would, would it be fair to ask you back at the end of August, to give us an update on what we went on that internally? And also, as Jim mentioned, taking the original roster of 30 to 40.
Yep.
And indicating who's participating, who wants to.
Sure.
Is that a fair amount?
Yeah. Yep.
Very good.
And then, August 18th.
Right.
With the gems. Have you got, have you got people lined up?
I have not, I just brought it for the, it was one of those items that was just kind of so far out. I just brought it for our officers meeting this past Monday, so I'm hoping to bring it to the next.
Well, you know, I've said I'd be, I haven't talked to Bill yet. We got, I think we're going to be too large to hold it up around. That's a notice I got tonight.
Oh, really?
Wow. And I wanted to talk to Bill about it. Could be up to 2,000 people now. We might have to move it to a lot now.
Nope.
We don't know, you know? I don't think Pope wanted a great piece of bill, this is not, and I think he's scared because Bill works so hard, working this and so excited about it. And I hate to say this, but. Billy, he really is heartbroken, you know, that he was so scared to talk to her, I said. And I couldn't let this conversation keep going, so I had to be.
But anyway, we can still participate in it.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying to, we're, we're going to work towards that. We're all getting with the clean streets, we're wearing.
They want to be just a combined team.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we'll get there.
I'm very excited that Bill's into this because it's very important and I think it's going to be a big thing. And I was so excited when I heard he was really into this. I think that's what, oh, it's so.
Baseball or something.
Well, you know, it's, it's a team, yeah, I mean, well, we don't know yet. It, it looks like this is going to be a lot bigger. Uh, fireworks, um, you know, teens, however, probably the Bearcat, Bergen, this is Swansea. There were so many little issues with people. I don't know, we could fit 2,000 people around here, you know?
Yep, so that's exciting. It was weird, people were.
Yeah, we were, this whole thing really built up since the first one I did, so I'm just going to be excited. But I can't think of enough. No, it was a big support he had, it's not mentioning the even break it's all. Because it would be great for Swansea and that's why I wanted to bring it to Swansea. Because this is my town, you know, I wanted Swansea, but, but there'll be other things that they'll be helping with. They'll be, you know, we've got a lot more on our brain, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Jeremiah Katola, waterline extension to Valley Creek develop.
Come on up, guest of honor seat. This is one of our, one of our addendums, it looks like this, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, on your way, sir.
Just turn on that microphone if it isn't already.
Yeah, I'm Jeremiah Katola, here for the waterline extension. That's from 1,250, 1,280 feet from the powers heading, I guess, south on 32, Route 32. Next to the property, next to the proposed fire station, so, um, I don't know if anybody's looked at the papers at all here. Yeah. Exactly. Exactly. So we've got the engineering done, the trans are done, the DOT permits are in. So, looking for if there's any grants or funding on a 50-50 split, so that's my request.
Wants to split the cost.
Listen, so, listen, may I ask, just for the record, how many feet are we touching?
Um, 1,280, 1,280. 1,280.
Thank you.
What's that? For people that think it's that kind of.
Very much, I'll explain.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so, my name is Mike Judge, I'm a police officer. I'm just going to play Mr. Campbell's voice here. He is the guy building the apartments next to the proposed fire station location, across from Captain Fox. You know where we are? 32. Okay. Currently, the water line stops right around Powell's generators, that area. And he wants to bring it up that far to, um, supply the required sprinkler system that's going to be in those apartments. Talking about fire prevention, I think that's the biggest thing we can do right now, is get out ahead of all these things and make sure that everything's up to code. To begin with, in all of these departments, or whatever you think about them, they all should be the safest buildings that we had in town. Because they all should be the best buildings we all have, because they are, they're the most famous, ready to build, including fire prevention, sprinklers and all this stuff. Because we own the land next to the proposed fire station. It was early conversation about, we're going to bring the water up anyway, the fire station could use it. We have a fire station that could use it. We have the southern landing, we have more valuable avenues, both public service is already in place and water supply.
So, I'm just.
Yeah, just the end of the property, yeah, basically, yeah.
Not for residential. Changing hats for a minute.
Go ahead.
I'll be the superintendent of the North Swansea Water.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Minimum would be eight-inch duct line, not six-inch.
Okay.
And, being on Route 32, if it wasn't at the end of the line, we'd probably be in the 10 or 12-inch range.
Okay.
But eight inches.
Eight inches, okay.
And then off of that, six-inch to the hydrants.
Okay.
Now, this is just water line.
Yeah. It's already there.
Yes. Let's get hold of this in the parking box.
What are you looking for from us?
That's what Mr. Katola's looking for, so, obviously, if the station had passed, we'd have, we had some funding associated for extending the line. Where we don't, it's a little bit of a different situation, so, um, it's really a.
Do you know where the money would come from?
The only real place I can think of, um, would be the invest in each per unit funds that we got for the affordable housing project that we're standing. We were going to use some of that towards the station, so it would be, it's sort of the same kind of concept.
And then if we sold the property, if the station committee doesn't pick that spot, that money would go back into the future fire stations.
What, I see some benefits of this, maybe a listen to you. One of the benefits would be we bring water to a piece of property with a fire station, with a piece we use. That's one of the benefits for the town, right?
Yep.
What are some other benefits for the town that would help us make this decision?
Well, you're extending the area that's covered by hydrants, so that's, you know, it's not a huge amount, but quarter mile. You're getting hydrants further south, it's getting closer to the school, which I know was a big push at one point, I think getting water down to the school.
Uh, houses are on that, they'll be extended to it.
If they want.
If they want, it's a choice. They have that option, and they, they connect onto that line too. Do you love homes in between that stretch?
Thousand or so. What's that?
On that side, there's Hampshire Fire. Eric Stanley, probably lives far enough off the road, he doesn't need it.
Yeah, I'm pretty far back too.
Yeah, and, uh, west, isn't that the, the old Nickerson Ranch there?
There's got to be six or seven on the other side.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed they have.
Or Smith, I'm sorry.
Yes, Smith, Smith. Yeah, Smith is far, Stanley, Smith and Hampshire.
And then the other side of the road is two, three.
But the other side of the road is pretty far off, so we're going to go.
So, isn't, I guess you would go, what, responsible water? There are provision in there that, that water, the water line went down through, people on subject systems, they go down and they have it. System failed, then they're.
Right, that sewer. That sewer, water doesn't have that requirement.
Yeah, this is.
Let me ask you this, what is your alternative? This doesn't happen if you want, if you don't get water, what is their alternative type of supply?
Wells, two wells, yeah, in the van. No. That's correct.
Will you turn the well on that property?
There's an existing.
Say, well, maybe we want it there?
I don't think we've done it before.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Well, he kept putting his sister.
Have to put it in the system, that's not good, you get it too.
Really, FW Webb, FW Webb has a sister that's 110,000 gallons. He would need 110,000, but he probably go 20.
And when we put the, when we put the cisterns in for this building, at that time, I think it was a dollar a gallon was what they kind of said for, just quick math on pricing, so.
And it's not unlike the apartments next to the Marlins, where they have a little cistern in the basement and, we know something, well, I have a water system, so.
So the risk we take is, first of all, what makes this unique, as long as sure, is the fact that we own the town, it's a gold problem. If the town didn't have all the gold property, we would not be entertaining this. I mean, the offer fell to us, but who would be entertaining? I'm only asking because it can potentially open, open the gates, but this is somewhat of a situation. So the risk of it is that if we say no, and the wells go, the bottom of the assets, now we're on the, to, to run the water line. I'm not a gambler, but, but seems to me that's the risk we run.
Or the other side is we pay to run it, we don't use it for that purpose and it doesn't add enough value for someone.
Tell me about the value, like, when people hook up, we're going to get, when we bring money into town, right?
Nope.
To you.
Precise.
Yes. So then it's like, that folks, if we brought it all the way to the well, then they hold out to.
But if something, my first firehouse property, acquired, March 1, 14, or something, I don't know, it's how do you that there? Not selling it the way you have. It's in the menu, it's pretty solid, and it shows, you get any more of this.
And it is business, business of.
That's correct.
One building that's there, I see.
Yeah.
You got to match that building.
Exactly. Yeah. In which, in the building?
In the building.
Yeah, eight. In each building, in each building, yeah.
But total, it's 32, you.
32, yeah. There are condos.
Finally, we did what for the town?
It's not difficult, it's just, it's unrestricted revenue for, that we can more or less use for anything, which we don't get a lot of, to be honest. So it'd be using kind of a finite amount of, you know, unrestricted revenue that we were planning to put towards things like the fire station. So it is kind of still along those lines, but I think we have about 500 or 600,000 left, so it'd be.
Do we have to have a public share?
Nope, we've already accepted those ones.
What is your timeline? When would you need the 7:00 box?
Well, I'd like to get the line, line in this summer, you know, exactly, yeah.
And the total cost is 200, 62,000.
Yeah, but Sly saying that it might change because of a six-inch line and he's saying eight-inch line. I don't know, is there any DES grant funding for what line, if I just looked online?
They really don't, yeah, we did check. They really don't, yeah, we did check, yeah, they really, they're not, they're not big on extending systems.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
If we were connecting to another system.
Or sort of upgrading an existing.
Oh, I see.
There's not a lot for extending, just for that sake.
Are we talking illegal?
No. To talk illegal?
Just, sir. If we're in a hurry with, if we're not able to handle our storms, do you have any better?
I don't think so, I, we can't, we can ask, but I, I think it's a pretty unique case, and I don't, I don't think we'd be, I don't think we'd be committed, or, people might bring it up, but I don't think it would be any kind of, then you're discriminating against someone else if you don't do it, so, I think it's a pretty unique case.
So, basically, you're, tonight, you're hopeful, you're working, say, yes, not knowing what the cost is.
Exactly, depending on this eight-inch line, I don't know how much I've been priced off the pipe, you know, I mean, so I don't know, that's what I'm looking for, yes.
Can't wait until July third?
That's what I'm looking for.
If you can get the price for our next meeting, July third, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we can't hear, or instantly?
I just got it, so, that little...
So, you don't give us a pardon?
Well, he's gonna basically have to do the same thing, come into precinct to ask him commissioners to, you know, accept it when he gets done putting it in, so.
Is that a risk?
Yeah, well, it's not really a risk, I mean, it's kinda like across from Frager's, what Flatley did was, they extended the ten-inch line, and then, uh, ran their own line up into the project, so, that, that's their line, but they gave us the line that's on their property along thirty-two on the other side.
That's ten-inch line, good. What do we have, how many, three, Frager's, what was it, eight?
Six, but it's being increased probably to ten, or...
Is that what you're saying, until it's be eight?
And it's the end of the line, so I think eight would be sufficient, you know? We have restrictions or limitations, because our water comes from Keene and the elevation of the Keene water tank.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's, uh, going up that hill, it might be okay going down the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Still might lose, yeah, a lot of pressure.
So, they...
Yeah.
Should we be extending a ten-inch line, just in anticipation of future?
What if we do not?
Well, we might end up coming from the other side, so.
This is the side of Talbot School?
I mean, they could end up with a well up Talbot Hill Road or somewhere like that, I mean, storage tank, Bosway Road, places like that.
So, should we come back with eight or ten?
I think eight.
If you want to go, well, we'll take twelve.
Yeah, I'm back with both.
I don't think it's gonna be different.
The engineer's broken it all out, anything that's a...
Yeah.
Well, you just have to know about the, uh, the hydrants and the tees, yes.
So, you said the third, okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you, yeah, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Mike Jasmine Town Hall gutters.
See, why is infrastructure, I think that's...
Still water.
Still water. Uh, so you guys have bits in front of you, I hope?
Gunned up, too.
See what they're looking for here, originally, I was asked with getting the price on the north and east side structure of the town hall. But we're putting gutters on town hall where deep the water, we want in the basement. That's just the case with many things, I was shocked by the cost, but I got used to that by now. Um, one of the dilemmas with town hall gutters, we're not just paying for a gutter, because when we redid the roof, we matched the old trim, more or less, and it created, and it's gotten this little wee shadow board, and it's not enough to hang a gutter on, so they're gonna wanna run an ASAP grill on the whole building so that they can solidly mount a gutter. And you can see in the paperwork, I provided a good portion of the cost, almost half of it was just the purchase of and installation of that ASAP, which, you know, can't argue that, it makes a ton of sense. So, the north and east sides are five thousand four hundred and fourteen downers, and then to do the entire structure, as I think you might ask, would be nine thousand seven hundred and forty-two. And they could get to it, uh, last night time, and then, uh, within a couple of weeks. Sure.
You have, you have a right.
Five thousand four hundred and fourteen?
Yep.
And nine thousand seven hundred and forty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a little bit of, a little bit of discount for doing the whole thing, kind of the offer here, uh, price, um, but still, you know, pretty damn expensive. But it actually works, and actually keep the water out of the basement, I hope they are pretty cheap fits. Um, the only issue I've ever, I mean, I had a lot of issues with guys, and why I didn't really, I don't particularly always like them. Um, firstly, is they require maintenance, God in their game, um, a lot of people just hang off it, because they aren't where they are on the roof and the rest of that stuff. Gotta say out of mind, but we've all gone by houses that actually have plants that's been growing out of them, that they're, that they're actually able to support visible life, that's not a positive thing. Uh, the other issue with them is, while they're doing that, of course, they're reaching back, and of course, we're having, uh, out of the soft, it's all of the things that, that many of us maybe we've had experience with it. These guys are really happy with the way we did the roof, the way we did the drip edge, the dual, um, ice, uh, ice breakers, and that stuff, so they weren't recommending anything over the top or anything like that, so, um, you know, they felt good about it, um, which, you know, it's good that we did that right, um, and that's it.
So, the one question I have, well, I have a few, but the extension that comes off the back of the building, we walk out, it doesn't look like we're putting a piece of cutting on. Well, that's gonna come right down into that window, too, because if it's the main roof, then we gotta be extension, then you gotta put where the water's having a problem, so, don't you, do we need to get a strip on that extension coming out?
We could, we could.
I'm just saying, we're gonna prevent all that water from that roof, you know, more than two, it's, I think I saw it, I'm going for this, right?
I, I, I'm hoping we're gonna, you know, fix that, so it doesn't happen either way, but, yeah, I mean, I could actually ask them, you know, create some reason for Ken to have that four feet, so.
I don't feel like they're just looking at it today, and I'm just thinking, the water's gonna come off that, too, we're gonna burn it all the way, because like you said, if this works, we got out of this tree.
Yeah.
And digging all the way down, putting drainings in.
Yeah, no, it's...
We can't have a fire top.
Yeah, that would be nice, they didn't go down after the heavy rain today. Uh, nothing on the east side, a little bit on the north side, at the, at least we solved, you know?
So, is everything under it?
If, uh, the one, this part of the handout, if you look at it, it's not, it's not immediately obvious, um, you'll see a hand drawn sketch, and in that hand drawn sketch, you'll see, um, where they expect it to pop out. So, they're basically looking at it, um, they're coming off at the top of the sketch, so you're actually looking at the front of the building, look at that, can you see that? So, the lower-left corner is the entrance to the rear that heads towards school, um, the other one is dropping it, um, at the over, it goes underneath the driveway to the school, and then the one in the rear, uh, is turning toward the, the apartment. So, that's where we're putting it for now. We have a building set up there, and a lot of great leaks to do it, but that's a lot of roof, it's gonna catch a lot of water. There's a guy who moves the water, you know, cistern water all sudden wrong for showers and such, and then you put the water off the rear, we like, yeah.
Just be worried about getting some ice on the roadway.
Well, I was worried, I was worried about that, that front there with, with ice cubes plus that, um, but because of where it is and the rest of it, um, I, I agree, I agree. We're gonna roll it, I mean, we're rolling, right now, actually, that would be coming off there unless we went with the whole building, right now, that would be only the culprit, would be going there, so, this would only be collecting off the front, which is still a whole side, uh, square structure, despite what the picture, this whole city's square, as the picture shows, um, but yeah, I agree, I'm not a big fan of it either, but theoretically, it's water, and hopefully it doesn't freeze. Oh, he thought they were, he didn't think there'd be a problem at all, because we've got not just one, but two sets of, uh, ice breaks on that thing. We run on those bases, but we, you know, did that for a good reason, and we agreed with that, so, still think we've got a good shot, it shouldn't be hard on them.
We'd have to run water through it sometime, no?
He didn't say anything about water or anything like that, uh, they did provide the, 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 uh, warranty, such as it is, meaning it's a warranty, um, so, you know, it seemed pretty good, but also, it seems like if they fell off, it would somehow be our fault, so, it's kind of confusing, so.
So, we just do the back and the side, the side and not?
I was, I mean, I, I will say, as far as, um, customer service and efficiency, I haven't seen anybody give a whoop for it, where these guys have my very long time. I was pretty impressed with what Sidney actually, really often trying to sell something. Welcome, Joe.
So, a lot of what you've been studying, is your preference in the north and east?
I, I have, I have, I have no preference whatsoever, I mean, I think it's definitely worth trying for the money, uh, the north and east are our two biggest problems right now. Um, that said, um, the western side of the structure, the entrance, has always been the big mystery leak, and it would be really interesting to see. Almost worth the money to see, if, if we got the water, it's not leaking anymore, well, it's still leaking, I wonder why, so, you know, I, not my money, I don't have experience or anything like that, it's hard for me to say, yeah, you should, but that's really been, that's the original leak, it's always been the bigger problem, and I'd be really curious to see if we put it in there.
You had some thoughts on redesigning the main entrance before with a lift, and...
Yeah, I wanted to do it, love to do it, um...
If we did put gutters on the front, would that be impacted by?
No.
So, you're not gonna change the roof line or anything?
Uh, not that one, because it's still only the main building, it won't be on the entrance, just be on the main building, it's only capturing main building, nothing else, save what I'm gonna get in the throwing for free.
Well, that's why I think it would still leak in the front, if you didn't get that portico or whatever.
That is my question, because I examined the roof, and my question was, when we did not roof, why didn't we put money in front? And I approached Michael, David, Mike, he had an answer from me, and said that there was future plans of taking this down, so it made sense to me, but it didn't make sense to me until I approached Mike and said, why haven't we just finished the job, you know? Because now the whole side is, oh, she does a pretty bad statement, and my concern is, there's a lot of issues there, what we've got going on in the town hall, and I think we need to address them, we need to, there's more than just this gutter, and that's why I'm suggesting, let's do this a little, do the back side, see if this works, instead of spending a whole, a lot of money, save a little of this money, that's why I was suggesting that, this is more that we have to look at.
Well, the thing with the roof is, no problem with nobody, nobody can agree along with that, the front porch roof is garbage, but I don't believe the front porch, front porch roof is the problem, like, getting that water into the basement, it's not going through the roof into the basement. Making the diversion of it and going in there, and maybe, any combination with it, I, I honestly don't know, um, but either way, I'm more than happy to set up, I don't really want, we can try those two sides first, see how it works, and if it becomes as natural as we're hoping it is, then...
Well, Mike, it's, to Mike, this is...
It will cost more later, though.
Well, that's what it's gonna get to, but, I mean, a project like this, you know, I've done roof and gutter, it isn't like we're paving the road where they're bringing heavy equipment out, and you take all the heavy equipment, it might not cost a lot more to have it finished, too. I know, when you say it was leave, but we're not talking about projects that they're bringing heavy equipment out and...
No, 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 no.
You know what I mean?
The difference is, that the savings isn't huge by any stretch of the band, or, okay, but it is the...
Make motion? Um, I'll make the motion that we do not, but at least side, and we make sure we put that strip on.
That is good.
But it's at five thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
Should we round it up to six for the strip, or you're confident? Should we round it up to six thousand, or? Fifty-five hundred, you making that motion, Mr. Tempesto?
I'll make that motion.
Make motion, they would second it to authorizing expenditure up to five hundred for the town hall repairs, maintenance, and previous, yeah, for gutters, I think, all in favor? I, I have some.
Thank you, Mike, for giving my research, my...
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you very much.
Richard Sullivan, Sawyer's Crossing Road Speed Limit Sign.
Come on up. Evening.
You as well.
Um, did you get that pack that I sent in the mail? So, um, we moved into our house in twenty eighteen, and it's very lovely area with a covered bridge, rural, we have a bunch of farm animals, but it sounds like a freeway out the front door. We were hoping we could calm that down with the radar speed signs, they're known to slow traffic down, um, and I think I had a cost sheet or a estimate, but we might need two of them, so it would be probably about six thousand dollars. And then, there was also a press release from the state, and it looks like there's a couple agencies that would be willing to provide funding for any sort of speed control measures, so that could help support it. And then, um, I did meet with the, uh, chief of police, and I thought he was gonna come tonight, but, um, he said that he was gonna look into grants, too, to see if anything like that could help, and, um, also that the town has, um, like a, a speed radar that you can move around, and it'll, um, produce data in an Excel spreadsheet to figure out what areas are problematic, and he suggested, when the bridge was finished being repaired, he would bring it up to our area.
Yeah, I was just out there with the sign saying, "Bridge closed," that probably wasn't a good time to do your, uh, your speed data.
Yeah, but that was a lovely time.
Nicely quiet.
Yeah.
We own something similar for that.
That's what she, yeah, that's what she's talking about, so it's the message sign, but it has the ability to take, um, speed and traffic count data.
And then we take that data back, and we look at it?
Right.
And we have done that speed?
Not that I'm...
Uh, the police chief said no. And, um, so, yeah, Sawyer's Crossing is kind of sectioned, so we live on the section between the bridge and Eaton, and then it goes from, um, I think Eaton to the rotary is also called Sawyer's Crossing, and then across the bridge, um, it extends out to ten, but most people go under the bridge, and then they like turn onto Matthews to get to Eaton, which is a, a town road, not a state highway.
Been grants on Robinson, yeah.
And then...
I was encouraged that the state suggested that you reach out to us to request it.
Yeah.
The state figures to allow us to assign them on Sawyer's Crossing, well, with regard to the bridge.
Oh, really?
This opens that door for us.
Oh, good.
So, thank you.
All of them. Yeah, that's, um, a problem, too, when the large trucks, um, come and realize they can't make it under the bridge, then they book it back the other way. Um, and then, I had... Um, and then I had, I don't know how fast they're going exactly because we don't have radar, but like noise, high speeds, you hear a lot of tire noise and, um, the aerodynamics of vehicle, and we definitely hear that. So, I estimate most people are going like fifty-five and sometimes someone will book it down there like seventy miles per hour.
See your speed bumps up there?
That would be nice too, yeah.
Have you named this, that, this problem?
Um, well, yeah, I, I got a petition, so. Two people are present here in the neighborhood. Yeah, and we got twenty, I got twenty-nine signatures from just our section of the street, absolutely. And yeah, no one really likes the traffic noise.
Do you come off that bridge? Would you say you have your name for the line?
Nathan?
He's my husband.
Nathan Sullivan?
Having off the bridge? People, yeah, but come off the bridge, come around that corner and see that straightaway and just, there are people at seventy miles an hour. That's thirty mile an hour road. Probably up there are, that person's clearly going over sixty miles an hour. We, we all see where that is.
And that stretches from there to the road, where you say that?
Yeah, well, from.
Other road.
To Eaton.
To Eaton? Yeah, just, you know.
It's straight.
Extremely straight. People who say, get, they're in the white vans at the bridge waving.
Or some kid will open up their motorcycle because it's fun.
And since the rotary went in, traffic's increased absorb. I think, I think Google Maps must change their algorithm something to take people that. It used to be busy during, can you, people were dropping off, there comes a school, maybe even work, and then apply down, or they bow. Which is fine, maybe it's real them, connected, seventy miles an hour on thirty mile an hour. That's, that's, I mean, there's children, plenty of people, multiple children on their road into residential road, road, people could go at seventy miles an hour.
The high schoolers run cross country. There, there's a sidewalk now, which is nice, but they used to run on the street. And I think twenty-five, over twenty-five miles is reckless driving.
Yes?
Um, Chris Davis, I live on the other side, I got a, um, right where Eaton Road and Stars Cross and Bridge are, next to the Voltairean house. And they do it in another direction too. They get to that split and, oh, I mean, they go by so fast, especially the motorcycles. Now, this time of year, there's not any school without. But my concern is, as we know about construction and bringing all the schools, it leads to that area, that's making the grease and traffic, and putting those lovely sidewalks. But yeah, and, and just like Bridget said, you'll hear these trucks going by and I'll be like, oh, they'll be turning around and making. It's, um, for those of us older people on the street, if we're out walking around, we'll be like, hey, slow down, slow down. But I mean, the speed is incredible. We have had our mailbox taken out. We have, you know, seen people go by. I mean, it's, um, and we've lived there twenty-four years, twenty-five years, and I've not seen the speed, even today, in the rain, when that storm was going by. And, and it's like, the cars are one thing, but I'm not worried about this. What I'm stuck with people, and I guess I just wanna say, I drive to range every day, so try where they have those signs, get down to thirty miles an hour. There are times I'm like, whoa, I didn't know I was driving that fast. And so you can get on the straightaway, being a resident of that street with this concern, and all of a sudden you're like, oh, I am going too fast. So, um, so I'm coming from the other direction from Nathan and Bridget, where they go off that way. Because, I mean, and, and my concern is, obviously, when schools get in session in the morning, parents are rushing off to work, et cetera. But I can tell you, I don't work from home often. I can tell you the moment the dad knock gets out, because that's when I start hearing car noises and horns and everything like that. So, this is, you know, anybody can come feel free and hang out on my driveway, but it's, it's a bad, it's a bad accident waiting to happen. So, when she came to my door to sign the petition, I think the other thing I noticed today when I looked at it, twenty-nine neighbors on that street, there were people who signed it, I didn't know who they were on the street. So, obviously, everybody who lived on that street thought it was a concern.
Pretty much, yeah.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Lisa Thorne, one eighty, Sawyer's Crossing Road, some of you know where I live, right next to the bridge. Not sure if anyone realizes, but the speed of it in front of my house, the bridge is fifteen miles an hour. It's posted on both sides. Nobody drives fifteen miles an hour at the bridge. My biggest question is, why can't we get enforcement of the laws we already have? I've had emails from the police chief, a lot of you know, that I have sent in literally hundreds, hundreds of pictures of vehicles who are not supposed to be on the bridge, let alone the speed.
Yeah, they're the worst speeders too.
And so far, nothing has changed. I do have an email from the police chief that he has invited, then they have to department information, you know, team guys, to come in and control the bridge anytime they want. Was that an invitation or was that a request? Did, do we not have the police personnel? Do we need the help? I don't know. He's not here to answer that question. I have a lot of concerns about the bridge, as you always all know. Speed is, I'm just waiting, someone's gonna get killed on that bridge. There's horses, neither horses, not a horse on the bridge. There's kids learning track. Now that we've got that beautiful sidewalk, it funnels people to the bridge so they can walk through it.
Which feels like a dump truck.
Yeah, and walk through that bridge.
Okay.
It's insanity to get to the bridge. And there's no signs saying yield pedestrians, so people don't. They barrel right through. If they're coming through a horse trailer or an equipment trailer, right to the bridge, whether there's people walking in it or not. And that needs to stop. There's plenty of signs there, sure, I'd love to see more signs, but I'd really like to see enforcement of what we already have. There's no reason the police cruiser can sit or cause way to go. Watch the bridge here and run the radar here. I don't see the problem with that.
Do they ever sit there?
Never. One time, twenty minutes on a Sunday morning, since I started complaining, and this has been going on, I've been complaining for over a year. They do not sit there. The only, if I start shooting off tons and tons and tons of pictures, I get a little bit more action.
Why, which is doing that?
I had pictures, I set up a game camera on a tree in my front yard, gave that, that exit and entrance to the bridge. Every, this threat's weight limit is six thousand pounds.
What are you seeing?
Spectrum trucks, enter source trucks.
Bucket trucks and some.
Guns, sending arms, and we're all wondering, oh, that's a police unit. No one's enforcing the laws we have. I've got pictures of car haulers calling, calling trailers with vehicles on the trailers, right to the bridge. There's all your lasting guys now that are out there now, they're hauling with their pickup trucks, they've got equipment in the back of the truck, and they've got all their hovers and equipment on the trailers, right to the bridge. Because no one enforces what we have for lots. So, that's the speed, that's the bridge, all of it.
So, there's two issues, David, then, then we're unauthorized vehicles going to the bridge and stay.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that here beside, I think that's a great idea. But can't we try and get some enforcement first? We got a police department. Wouldn't they sit at causeway and monitor the bridge and run the radar?
I think so.
We own one of those signs, don't we own one of those? Didn't Joe use one of those, made one of us, and we went to one?
The message board, yes, not, not, not when Chief says.
I mean, what we own a message board.
Correct, but it's not like a radar sign that says, you're traveling forty-five miles an hour and the speed limit's thirty.
This could be something that we can put that out there for a week or so, but unauthorized vehicles, they're noted, and screaming, is this on the message? I get there for a week.
It's probably being used for dead in the thousands, right?
They're, they're busy, they're busy right now, but after projects done, yeah.
But funding for a fixed sign would be good. Hopefully, the governor signs a bill.
Two bills?
Did it pass both houses?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we can get some video enforcement.
That's great.
People going over the bridge.
You can get it on video. I posted, make sure it's something in the bridge. That's how we get the police to go, because they had a picture. But I don't know what they prosecute, if they follow up, if they follow.
Yes, I was presented to us last week. I don't know if it was a specific one, but there was a campaign, and she complained that it was presented to us last week. May have been not. Did, did either of those bills, they enforce?
One of them increased the fines significantly because right, right now, a few of them were, yeah, yeah. Think up to six hundred or a thousand.
Plus damage to the bridge.
No, I don't think we, I think the cameras are for damage. I think the fines are.
That's why it's, so they can't use them for enforcement.
I don't think so. I think it's specific to damage.
So, part of the problem in the R S A is, the local police don't have scales to weigh of any vehicles. So, they can't, or they feel, they can't ticket them for overweight, because they can't prove without having a scale that they're overweight. Now, according to the police chief, if they see a big truck, yesterday they were supposed to see a dump truck rolling with Eddie, weigh over six thousand pounds, right to the bridge. He said they do have probable cause if they see them. So, if they're probable cause to pull them over, it's just a radio call, all the D O P does. They've been sitting under thirty-two, monitoring all of the trucking that went out of here, that they come over this is his. Probably if that was done a few times, probably would suck. Or be heard of, probably would suck.
Well, we could enforce the toll.
We can enforce the toll.
But the dog can start, if they do that.
The only vehicles with trailers that I've seen, maybe there's more that I haven't seen. The only ones I've seen pull over is the local guy with his little trailer with his trash can on, going to the dump. They're not pulling over the car haulers. They're picking on the little bits. I don't know what.
With all that, wouldn't it travel mostly by locals?
Not with GPS.
Yes, you have a lot of traffic from Massachusetts.
Yes, and that's why the tractor trailers come racing around the corner, following the GPS.
I was trying to, trying to think when you said that if we did it for a while, it would probably change, but not at the local. They, they, from mass instead of wooden, it would affect the locals, you know, if we did it for a while.
The Department of Transportation had an average of four thousand cars a day pulling down the road.
Four thousand a day, or less than that?
Um, yeah, down south is crossing, so.
That leaves, because that's how many pictures per day I was going through and pulling out all the people. That's why I said I had said hundreds.
So, as Jim said, we got two issues. One, Lisa, we can deal with yours, we can have a conversation with the chief, and we can discuss that, I can't, but I think. The other, with regard to Frank's comments to you, is our first approach to request a speed study, or we go directly and request the sign.
Um, I would like first sign, I mean.
I believe they were, I believe those were two separate.
Yeah, I was asking him questions, so.
But we don't, we, we go down to speed then.
Right.
Yeah, I feel.
Yeah, so we don't, we know when I.
Well, thirty would be great, if people would actually do it. Yeah, if people would actually go thirty, that would be great, yeah. It is thirty, yeah.
Change and so on, so it's already thirty.
It's already thirty, yeah. Yeah.
We can move forward to request.
Request the speed sign, yeah.
Yep.
Investigate the grant funding.
A neutral cost, yeah.
So, we can.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you like me to send my president?
No.
Would you do it on Park Street in North Swansea? Right.
Yeah, no, thank you for the help with that. We'll let you know when the bill signing is, so you can, uh, come up to Concord with us.
But we just need.
Yes. All right, Bill's leaving. Mike, you wanna jump in his seat?
Have a good night, though. Thanks.
July meeting schedule? Is he also?
He can set whatever we want now that he is leaving. No meetings, okay.
Get him to the speed rider.
I'm sorry, but, ye- yes, yep.
I'm sorry, sorry, Bill was in another.
I just said we're on July meeting schedule. July third, regular meeting, with a public hearing for outdoor concert series Battle of the Bulls. July tenth, suggested no meeting, seventeenth, regular meeting.
We can, we can do the tenth, third, tenth, and twenty-fourth if you want.
Either way.
It's a, it's a five, uh, five Wednesday month, so, yeah, if you want, if you wanted to swap that, we could.
No.
You just want to make sure.
Every other is fine.
You just want to make sure Jimmy knew when old home day was, right? Since he's in the parade this year.
Right. And he's cooking. And if we need the other meeting on those off days, we're available.
Can you make a consensus?
Yeah, to schedule those proposed.
Consensus.
So, then talk three, seventeen, uh.
Yeah. And then we'll do the job description update, Assistant Solid Waste Manager.
Part of our periodic updates, uh, reviewing different positions periodically, have one of these or two a month. Um, so we added some additional responsibilities to this position now that we have the third, third full-time employee over there, and they're up to, up to staff, which is great.
Good. Yes, please. Move. To approve the Assistant Solid Waste Manager job is, description as proposed? Second? Aye, ayes have it. Crescent Covered Bridge redecking, uh, D P W changed the, authorized the change order for stainless steel lag bolts instead of galvanized. Looking for a motion? From the cap, Covered Bridges Restoration and Repair Capital Reserve Fund for Crescent Bridge redecking expenses. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Any administrative update?
Uh, just another point on the Crescent Bridge, uh, with Ms. Thorne's, uh, support, and which was appreciated, we took out some trees there as well. Um, there was a, there was a cost to that, but I'd like to check with the trustees to see if they feel like trees associated with preserving the bridge counts. I think it probably does, but.
You would think so.
Before we approve that, but I, so I might come back for that.
What was the cost of the deck?
Total cost, just over.
Thirty-two, what?
I thought it was just over fifty, is what I was gonna say, between the decking and then the cosmetic repairs.
We have it in here, somewhere.
The lumber, I think the lumber was, I think the lumber was forty-two.
I was saying.
I think the lumber was forty-two.
The thing with stainless steel legs, so putting that, so they wouldn't. I actually have a piece of the old bridge in my truck I wanted to bring in.
Thirty-two, five.
Show you that's, um, the thickness of the new, was that like that thick? And the board that we took off was about that length.
How much, how much had worn down?
Well, yeah, you're right. It's fifty.
I'll say that.
Yeah, I think the lumber was forty-two, but. Yeah, why didn't you bring that in? You didn't want to get it wet, right? Because it was raining earlier?
I wonder what it was, it was, and it swans here.
Does it still smell?
Yes.
Yeah, leave it outside.
Well, the kerosene smell. They're smelling oil, it's disgusting. I thought it was preservative, but now, but it's not, it's swimming tires, aging and going across.
And horses.
Yeah. And it, you know, it leaks down below the base, it's nice. I'd be my point there when they had it all up. We watched the whole good look too, so.
Um, you mentioned administrative updates, so I just want to mention that, uh, the painting of this building exterior, of all, it's been seven years, is currently out to bid. So, we're hoping to get some, some bits on that and get that done this year. Also, it's in correspondence, but, um. Also, it's in correspondence, but that Senator Shaheen recommended funding of two million dollars towards the West Swansea Water Company project. So if the town were to acquire that to improve the system.
Very good.
That's just the first step. It's got to go to committee and all that, but I thought that was, that was good.
That's good.
Yeah, and Underwood, give Ben Dyer a lot of credit for doing a lot of work on that.
Thank you.
Nice. She did and she has, but it's only been a drop in the bucket so far. So it's, she, we have a, what they call congressionally directed spending, it's a fancy word for earmarks, two hundred thousand towards the project. So better than nothing, but it wasn't, hasn't been enough to put it over the top yet. Right after I figured out the secret was Congresswoman Custard, because she had gotten Walpole and several others, like millions of dollars, and she announced she's not running again. So finally cracked the code and then she pulled the plug, so.
It's always a Congress, not the Senate.
That's what I found out a little too late.
Got anything with that correspondence? So we in the clear?
Not in, not in our hands, so it's informational, I think, every now and then.
Then public input. Jay?
Okay, Jay Moore, I got a couple things. One's personal and one's sort of more drawn. One, your first.
Personal.
Personal, okay. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't be here earlier because I couldn't get it out. But thank you, we're one of the people who have a tax debate. I disagree with the person who decided on that. They says that although the taxpayer suggests an X ninety-one survey showing the size of point one-two should be used, because even permission, if you agree, for this request is not specific enough to support the change. I gave a lot of specific information. We, last year, context, we were charged for two task posts for point one-four acres and point one-six. My deed specifically says point one-two acres, since five thousand two hundred eight feet or less, which is point one-two, one-two acres. And I, in the fall, when I first questioned this, remember, I did a scale diagram using the management, using the orientations and distances in my deed and voted the town hall and Joyce Billman and I sent something into the tax assessing office or whatever it was, asking for clarification. I calculated by drawing the diagram and then, or giving triangles and squares, five thousand two hundred seventy-one square feet, which is close to five thousand two hundred eighty, which made me feel that point one-two acres. I asked them for clarification. How they determined that point one-six have emerged and some lost, emerged from that whatsoever. The, so my, my question is, we're getting the rebate back to point one-four acres, is what we're getting. And they, two things. One is, I think it should be scrolled back to point one-two, as I suggested. And we had the documentation, the dimensions, the nineteen ninety-one survey had the dimensions that are less than the nineteen, nineteen oh-four survey, which is the deed was based on. And not only that, but the abatement process means that every year we have to go through the same thing. We've already been billed on point one-six acres per action, first batch of both point four. So I would like to have our property tax card changed to point one-two acres, which is what we own. You guys are taxing us for what we own, which is unfair. That's only small. It's a couple hundred dollars taxed for this. Every point one-two acres is about three thousand dollars. It's just the point, the whole point is, I think for years the property's been taxed at point one-four. Didn't really notice it until I went up to point one-six. But we own point one-two. Why are we being taxed on the way? So my request for you is, is twofold. One is, I would like to have the abatement based on point one-two and have documentation, which I can give you. And also, I would like to have our property tax card changed. James, that's my personal.
Well, we can give it to Dave Marazoff, our assessor, but.
Yeah, what are my options here? That's my.
Well, I think the important thing to understand is, a lot of it is, like my property, I think I ended up losing some property, but my tax bill's going to be the same because it's a building law. If you try and sell a building law, you know, we're taxed on fair market value. So whether you have one point four or one point two or one point one-two, it's still a building law. And I think the property value is going to be roughly the same. It's not going to, I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I see what you're saying and I expected mine to come down. It didn't because I'm still a building lot. My neighbor might have gained some, I didn't really look, but somewhere in the, the G I S, some people gained a little bit of land, some people lost a little bit of land, but in the end, they're all building lots, houses, so.
You know, and ours reports is undersized and all that. Point one-two, not one-two. I don't understand how I could gain thirty-three percent more. Point one-six is a hundred thirty-three percent of what we own. The only explanation I could think of is the darn aerial survey measured the tree that had fallen into the pond from our property, sticking out in the pond, has a panis, a lamp, and.
Well, that should show up on the map. If you bring up the map, does it show? Or is it a straight line? Yeah.
And, and of course, the map, the property tax map has the dimensions on it. So the dimensions are there. Side is, is the dimensions indicated in the deed. And put those dimensions down according to the angles of the, you'll do, again, one two acres.
I'll send it to Dave and see what we can do, I guess.
So I, I can go back to Michael and ask him to, to send the documentation again or write it up a little bit, send it. I really, thank my boy, Buck and Mary, but. But I didn't realize that, that it wasn't going to come out the way I wanted it to come out. And so now I want to know if I have a right, so with the payment request, whether I have a right to go back and visit that and appeal that.
You do. So by September first, I believe, you can apply, you can appeal to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, which is like this, it's a state, state board. That would be the, uh, well, not really, because it'd be, I can, I can give you the paperwork.
I think somebody there could help you.
But.
Give the paperwork.
Yeah. I can give you a general overview, but.
And the other thing is, of course, is what do I do about this year?
This year will be, this, this year will be changed to one point four.
Point one-two.
Point one-four, yes, sorry. Uh, point one-four, and it will be, the adjustment will come out during the second.
Tax bill. Yeah. Well, all right, that's good to know. So that's why I'm going there for, to scroll around this. If I'm successful with the appeal, things could revert to the one-two.
Correct. Yeah, so val- value changes with the revale this year, but acreage, acreage would change.
The acreage, it's the value of the building, et cetera. I understand that's going to change, whatever. This is only about the acreage.
Right. And I think, I understand why you're not satisfied, and I appreciate that, respect that, but I think, I think the general trend he tried to use was, right or wrong, short of a survey, go back to what the acreage was. So, and I understand, like I said, I understand why that's not what you're looking for. Well, right.
Um, and, and so basically, basically, I understand what he did. He said, you know, the point one-six was an increase, it wasn't justified, so we're going back to what it was before that, they're actually, I just want to go back through. To my second one, and the personal one. Second one is, you all remember that when the Upper West Pond Dam project was proposed, the engineer said that the flow of water from the Upper West Pond into Lower West Pond would be maintained. On July, on June eighth, we did a water testing. We went to test the water at the culvert, entry into West Pond at the culvert, no flow.
Yeah.
Completely filled with stagnant water, coming with bomb, whatever. So we went up to Upper West Pond to test there. There was a trickle of water coming off that didn't flow past the first little line and, and the spillway there. We tested the water there. Last Sunday, my wife and I walked up there, no water, no water flowing whatsoever. Residents in Old St. Pond are complaining about the water level going down. I'm concerned about the health of the water because the state biologist who was with us in the water testing said, you have a wonderful situation here. You have flow, you have water flowing through continually constantly, and that keeps your water fresh. So what, why isn't, how can we hold the construction crew accountable for what they said? They said water will be flowing as it always has, but it's not. I'm not sure why it isn't. Could be that water levels are down all over the place, it could be that, but they were going to be instructed to alternative spillway for that water to flow. I don't see that yet. It's just a matter of time until that happens. I'm just asking those questions and I'm going to talk.
Yeah, I believe they're waiting for the, the Coffre Dam, which is going to be, is the big, big bubble of material that basically will serve as a temporary dam and then we'll divert it. That's my understanding.
I think they have the best intentions. I, I really respect it. That's on their presentations and so on. It's just not happening and it's a little bit disconcerting.
Have you looked online at the Outer Brook Dam?
I know the Outer Brook Dam is old town. I haven't looked online to see if they're releases or not.
Yeah.
It just.
I haven't either. I, I would check that because I was up at Outer Brook last week and I was surprised how low that is.
I think the river is low everywhere.
Yeah.
Both of us who are retired and adult, or still the river is down, but the shovels. So all I can say is that, is that I just want you folks to be aware of the fact that it's not living up to what they promised.
Yeah, so we can follow up with them for sure.
People are getting concerned.
Yep.
And I'm concerned about the health of it. We'll test again next week.
There is some movement. I went up there last week and there is movement in that back beast that's coming down, not along. You're right, but there is movement.
There wasn't Sunday, too.
This Sunday?
Sunday. There was, there was no water coming out of the dam, there was no water in the spillway and up there. And there's no water coming through the hole and so on. They're just sitting there, staying.
Yeah, this Michael is right about that damn thing that they're going to cut it off and they're waiting for the bubble to come. They fill it with water, it sinks to the bottom, they're on, and then it shuts that off, then they can dismantle the dam. And there is a spillway that is supposed to be running. I saw it running before it was Sunday, so I'll go back and take the.
Well, thank you. Okay, hopefully it'll get resolved. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Thank you.
Jim?
How come, how come we're not making them have the materials on site before we even let it wash? The deal is supposed to maintain and keep water flowing, the whole of West Pond. They should have never done anything until they had the materials on site to do the job. They haven't been there all week. And I, I'm not going to vote today, the water's going down.
Pretty soon.
We should, from now on in, they're going to do something, have material on it on site. Or has, there's no way there.
The last, the last I asked is the water, I was told, staying stable. How much do you think it's going to listen to this drop?
Jimmy would know better because it's been out of the water.
Jimmy has.
Say a foot? Did you say a foot?
Yeah. And, and you know, if, if, between last Sunday and June, June eighth, when we did the water test, a couple weeks, more than a week, so generally, um, no water's been flowing, that would indicate, that would be reason why no water's flowing from that West Pond.
You know, and they've done a little evaporation, too.
Yeah. And of course, you know, evaporation can be big, this can be, it's going to take a lot of water. But we, we had the blast on having a constant flow of water. And there's water flowing in the other rivers, the lesser rivers. I'm more concerned about trying to hold you construction crew accountable for what they said, the engineer said, then presented to us, we all came to ask questions, very encouraging. They said the water flow will not change. I even asked up to follow up, you know, very green, and get up the other ones. Water level will not change, the waterfall will not change. Right, it will not change. So they're not, they're not knowing what they said.
It's silly looking for it, it's not.
Yep. And it may be a problem with no water coming in the diversion dams.
It could be. It could be that, could be that somebody has messed with the diversion dam in some way.
Well, it might just be the lack of flow in the mini water.
Flow on the river, yeah.
That's the diversion dam, yes.
We took the night, that's where I went.
Yeah.
And it was slow, going through the bit then. They asked that.
Oh, through the diversion dam, it's gone. That's what you're saying. Water was much earlier.
Yeah, it's a little upper that.
Right, the big concrete.
But that's the one up.
But you got the, but you also let the piece that brings off, that's what was going down there. It's a piece that brings off, like the stream, it's down over.
Down toward, down toward the, uh, uh, fireplace and stuff like that.
Yeah.
The river divides there, one goes into West Upper West Pond, will go off toward T. But the part that goes all toward West Pond, goes to Upper West Pond, and then it's supposed to go over that nail, down the Lower West Pond, and that's not happening.
We'll look into it. Thank you.
One other thing about extension there, I believe, when you got there, the water test, and they were concerned about the long water. So now with the water going down, without that water problems in West Pond, you got water problems, there's only that much water. Shallower deaths, the lead, the fish, I think it did.
Last year, we had a fairly large fish kill and biologist thought it was because, I mean, spawning season, the water was too high. And, you know, they're so small, most of it's over by now, but. So this, this heat wave is a little bit later than it was last year when we had the issue, but it could still be affecting the fish. Some of the species are more sensitive to hot water than hope.
The other thing about temperature, I went to a training last week and one of the sessions was, uh, different folks from Department of Environmental Services, they had people from different divisions, and one of the presentations was on cyanobacteria, which is really devastating a lot of ponds and lakes, and they're basically becoming effectively unusable. So that's another water temperature.
You worked really well on that.
Right.
So far.
They said the best thing you can do is prevent it before it happens because the treatment options are not, not easy or effective. Fertilizer, fertilizer is a big cause of that in lots of rivers.
We've been working on that. A lot of people at Lake Smart, some have assessed their proctors and so on. We've now got twenty-one, twenty-one proctors that have looked at it, that's definitely
Thank you. Anything else?
More public input? I have several non-publics, but.
Seeing none, I guess we're going to non-publics.
Thanks, Dennis.
Shut off the microphones, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Do we make that motion for B for hire?
Okay, so we'll make a motion to B for hiring.
Here is it.